So let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Oh, alright. Good evening, everybody. This is the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five special meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Krista Nielsen and I'm the secretary. Um, I'm standing in for Dan Radman, our chair tonight, because he is on an airplane and he may attempt to join, but I don't know that we will see him. Um, so the first thing I will do is take a roll call. Um, as I already said, Dan Radman is, I believe, absent unless he surprises me. Krista Nielsen present, Eric Knowles.
Here.
John Chris.
Here.
Tom Benton.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Okay. Chris Herring. Not here. Paul Knag.
Here.
Alan Swerdlow. Not here. Uh, Christina Larson. Is not here. Megan Menching.
Here.
And Bill Pratt.
Here.
Um, so the first thing I want to do is give everyone a chance to meet our two new alternate commissioners that have joined the commission recently. Um, so we have Megan and Bill here, and I was just gonna give you each, you know, a minute to introduce yourself, tell us your background, why you're interested in in joining the commission, and also I just wanna say thank you for volunteering. We appreciate it. Megan, you wanna go first?
Sure. Um, so I'm Megan, originally from Michigan, um, married a New Canaanite, well, I guess four years now. Um, we have a one-and-a-half-year-old and are now expecting, um, a little girl this spring, which is, um, actually news to us. But my background is I'm a licensed architect, so I practiced architecture for several years, then I went into development, which, um, I did for another few years, and I'm currently doing construction project management, but I've thought for a long time that I wanted to kind of give back to the the built environment in some way, so I've kind of been tagging along to planning and zoning meetings for probably a year now, and most of you have seen my face um, at one point or another, but, um, grateful to be here and excited to get to work.
Thank you. Bill?
Um, my name is Bill Pratt. I've lived in town since nineteen ninety-four. I grew up in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I'm an Eagles fan. I apologize for that. Um, I've, um, all my kids, I have three children who all went through the schools here from, uh, First Presby, West School, Saks, and the high school. My wife has been very involved as president of the PTC at all three of those schools. As for myself, I've been involved in private boards and whatnot. Um, I own a small business in Norwalk that I've been, um, working at for the last thirty-eight years. Um, I got an interest in planning and zoning and whatnot as I led the, uh, Country Club of New Canons Project from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty, from the beginning to the end, and um, I've just got an education about how all this works, and I was kind of intrigued and, uh, 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 about it, and when I was asked to, if I would be interested in this, I raised my hand, so here I am, and, uh, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. Um, the second thing I wanna cover is that this is a special meeting specifically for the training of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners. So while it is a public meeting and members of the public may be on this Zoom tonight, um, there is going to be no public hearing or public comment portion of the meeting. Um, so if any members of the public are present, we invite you to listen and learn with us this evening, but please keep yourself on mute because we will not be hearing from the public tonight. Uh, Commissioners, in terms of our agenda, it's gonna be broken into two parts, if you took a look at it. The first part is going to involve a presentation from Renata Bertati of Yukon Clear, which is the Center for Land Use Education and Research. And then following that presentation, we're gonna open it up and have a question and answer session, both with Renata and our town attorneys who are present. I saw Pete Gelderman and I think maybe Ira and, uh, Nick are joining us as well. Um, and our hope is to wrap this meeting up around nine, so we'll see if we can make that happen, but, um, that's our hope. So, uh, a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. I'm going to ask everyone to refrain from asking questions during Renata's presentation. She has a lot of material to cover, and from talking to her beforehand, I know that it's gonna raise ideas and questions and thoughts in your mind. Please write them down and and take some notes, um, because she does have a lot to get through, and I would like you guys to hold your questions, and we'll come back to them at the end, so please feel free to take some notes. And then when we do open it up for question and answer at the end, um, we'll have Renata answering questions about kind of the subject matter stuff that she's covered. Um, anything that's more specific to issues we've had with the commission or things relating to projects we've had in the past, um, or other circumstances that are New Canaan-centric will be directed towards our attorneys. Um, so without further ado, let me introduce you to Renata Bertati. She is an Assistant Extension Educator in Land Use Planning and Climate Resilience with Yukon Clear. If any Commissioners are not familiar with Yukon Clear, it's an excellent resource for planning and zoning Commissioners. They offer in-person trainings like this one, but there's also a wealth of recorded trainings on their website. Um, those of you that have been around for a while may recall that in two thousand twenty-two, the legislator legislature passed Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine, which requires all Commissioners to have four hours of training in their first year of service and then another four hours every other year. Um, so just knowing that all of this recorded material is out there on Clear's website is really helpful, and you can refer to it anytime, and the trainings are basically done i- if you do them through their website on the honor system, so you would, you know, watch them in your own time and report to Sarah that you'd completed them. Um, and I'm sure that before this evening's over, Renata is going to give us the link to that website, so you guys can all find it. We're also going to be recording, we are recording this meeting this evening so that we can refer back to it and/or possibly provide it to future new Commissioners so that they can have sort of the same introduction that we're having. So, that's it from me. Um, Renata, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I just wanna say thank you so much for taking the time to be here with us tonight.
Thank you very much for having me, for inviting me, and thank you, Krista, for laying out this in such a good and clear term. You saved probably like two minutes of what I was going to say.
Sorry.
Presentation. No, don't be sorry, please. So, as you heard, my name is Renata Bertati. I work with Yukon Center for Land Use Education now. However, before starting to do that, I was for probably about eighteen years planner in various communities from Coventry, Windsor, to, um, you know, Newington and Maryden, like larger places like Newington, and then Maryden and and Manchester. So, um, I have in some capacity staffed commissions like yours for many, many years. I very well understand, in addition to uh, this training, I very well understand, um, matters that you face when you are seated as a Commissioner. Um, we always start our training with some important disclosures. It's a little bit intimidating to see Ira Bloom in your room right now, because in these eighteen years, I attended sessions that he taught at planners, but, um, my presentation is about best practices, and it's really not legal advice. You should always defer to your town attorneys for legal advice on any spec- specific matter or anything that you find in my presentation that perhaps differs from a practice that you do and you would like to ask somebody about, I would say, go and talk to your town attorney about that. We at Clear provide a lot of training, and more of it will come in this year. Regardless of your necessary credit hours, um, to satisfy the the state statute, there is a lot of resource on our website in a way of these trainings. Some are short, some are long. You can look at the segment, review segment of video that you're interested in, but there is just a slew of, uh, good stuff on our website. If you sign up to our email notifications, we will be notifying you each time we provide something new. Um, and then if you don't want to receive emails from us, you're more than welcome to visit our website and take a look at training that's posted there. As Krista said, this is recording. I will, after this presentation, email the copy of the slides, so you will have access to those. Also, during this presentation, I will be asking you some questions, uh, and we will be using this interactive poll. We'll see how that works. Uh, if it doesn't, we will reroute and do that differently, but we'll try with the poll. It's kind of engaging and fun thing to do. So, these are the matters that we will talk about today. We'll talk about your responsibilities when you're seated as a Commissioner, this concept of fundamental fairness, which is really a basis of all of our training, legal basis for land use regulations, different land use commissions, and what statutory, um, realm are they enacted under? The commission's authority as it's related to different kind of application, um, and then some basics on running a meeting. Many of you are perhaps here just for the training requirements. Um, however, um, I would like to bring your attention to the fact of your, um, just responsibility that you carry each time you enact a land use, each time you act on a land use application or change a regulation or chan- change your zoning map. Being a land use Commissioner is a responsible job. Your decisions affect your community's quality of life for generations to come. You really have a big role in deciding where investment in your community does or does not take place, and your decisions affect both individual and businesses' financial well-being in your community. Having this responsibility is not easy, and it's increasingly not easy with the times that were, you know, last, I don't know, maybe decade or so, and and now. Um, you're frequently finding yourselves sort of stuck between rock and hard place. We're having less and less land that is truly easy to develop and more and more demands on those lands, so these decisions are getting harder and harder to make. Um, I use this slide, which is from my predecessor in this program, because it really depicts well this position of, should I be walking in the middle of the street and get hit by a car, or do I walk at the edge of the street and get bit by an alligator? Um, and that shows the sentiments of you being faced with a decision that nobody in your community likes or people that you care about do not like. Um, perhaps you don't like it either, but it's recommended by your plans, by your regulations, you know, there are other reasons for which you feel like you should act certain way that conflicts with, um, people that you care about or your own perhaps values. Um, so the core foundation, as I said, of this training is this concept of fundamental fairness, and we believe that as long as you always act with this basis of being fundamentally fair, you run a pretty decent chance of hopefully not getting sued um, and not incurring some costly mistake for your community. And I'm going to move here to show how some of these mistakes can be made. Pause a little bit for dramatic effect and bring you here and do the same. These kind of mistakes happen perhaps because somebody wasn't paying attention, or perhaps a Commissioner does not have an expertise in site plan reading and was not able to identify some of these matters. And while these are kind of silly and funny-looking and costly to fix, they're fixable, they're easier to correct than some other, I'm sorry, I'm going in the wrong direction here, than some other mistakes that are kind of mistakes that build over time, right? So something that you don't see immediately. If you approve a site plan that has, you know, a traffic light that's all wrong, that's obvious as soon as that is constructed, so the community can correct that. Situations like this that incrementally grow, your decisions incrementally affect um, what happens on the land, those are not sometimes as obvious to see. So, what we ask when we talk about responsibilities is to constantly be aware of the incremental effect of your decisions over time. Um, there are ingredients, to be fair, you know, be fair to everybody. Um, have an open mind, come to meetings, prepare to actually hear all the arguments before rendering the decision. We all have certain feelings, right? And some of uh, us sign up to be on commission based on those feelings. If you're a person that care about environment, perhaps you will have that influence how you think about the project. That is different than deciding before you even go to the meeting. No way, I'm never approving this or you know, this must happen. Those are kind of situations that if you feel that strongly about something, you should consider your options. You should consider perhaps recusing, having, uh, an alternate sit in your place, things like that. Like you need to evaluate your own feelings and your own acceptance of facts before the meeting in order to be fair. Um, obviously treat everybody with respect. Um, as a staff for so many years, I can tell you that nothing makes commission more vulnerable to really bad plans um, and really bad application submittals than when an applicant, a developer discovers or have a sense that there is some kind of discord between somebody on the town staff, like town traffic engineer or zoning officer and, um, somebody on the commission. So those are the matters, just handle them in a proper process through staff, never in a public meeting, you know, that sort of stuff. Come to meetings prepared. Don't be that Commissioner that comes to the meeting and goes, huh, what's on the agenda tonight? Um, and demonstrate that preparedness by reading your documents. Take time to review your Plan of Conservation and Development. Understand the limits of powers you have, which is this training. We'll talk a lot about that today. Um, understand how to apply your regulations, know your regulations as they apply to the project or proposal that's before you. And use your regu- regulations in a consistent way, so make decisions that are consistent over time. At this point, I'm going to take a sip of water and ask you to log into Slide A and see if this polling thing works, because I'm going to ask a question in a minute. Okay, so the first question is, which of the following provides the legal basis for a local commission's land use authority? Okay, so this did not show me. Has anyone actually logged into this yet? Can somebody give me like thumbs up, thumbs down? Oh, you know what? Actually, I'm sorry, I'm looking at like two different screens, and I'm not even seeing it. It's it's right here. It's right in front of me. That's it. Okay, so is it legislation through state statutes, a vote of the city council, court decision, duly adopted legal regulations, or governor's active order?
So I'm logged in, but I'm not able to check one of this.
Okay, so I'm not sure again if this is going to work or not. I'll move off of this slide, and then we'll try one more, and if it doesn't work, then I'll ask you to answer in chat. So, the the correct answers are the green-marked ones: legislation through state statute, court decisions, and duly adopted local local regulations. And for a moment, I'm just going to address all three of those. So, pre-constitution U.S. operated under the British legal system, and under that system, all land had for centuries been deemed to be subject to governmental control under the sovereign kings and queens, who would then grant certain rights to their subjects to use particular parcels in exchange for services rendered to Crown. Those rights were known as fees, and that's where that, uh, one hundred and sixty-nine fivedoms comes from. British law in colonial era also recognized certain rights that each citizen had to be protected from harm by others. Parliament could create those protections directly by enacting legislation, and its authority to do so was and still is known as the police power. You probably heard that term before. In addition, the courts could create protective or compensatory rights by finding them to be inherent to civil society, common law. Common law, for example, required that use of land be reasonable, that it not create an undue risk of harm or unreasonably interfere with the use of the nearby property. So, the states are enabled by constitution to enact their own regulations over their land, and then they can decide what powers to pass on to counties and municipalities within their jurisdiction. In Connecticut, towns have only those powers that have been expressly granted to them by the state legislature through the state enabling legislation, which means that because all of our town agency have only this limited jurisdiction, in order to take any valid formal action, you must always make sure that you state within these powers that are expressly granted to you through enabling statutes. These are the enabling statutes that pertain to planning zoning. I included wetlands um, just for the informational purposes. I understand you're Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, these are quite important to, um, any changes that, you know, happen, including this, um, training requirement that came through to the statutory changes. So it's sort of important to know these, to know where to look them up. Um, although I will admit they may be a a bit confusing to read and quite a snooze fest, frankly. The next, um, authority, uh, comes from your local regulations, and this really is your ultimate source of local land use control in your community. I'm showing on the slide just the basic set of zoning subdivision and wetlands regulations. You all have seen some, something, some of those or all of those, rather. Um, and then lastly, there are court decisions. So, state statute allows a town to have a commission and allows then to that commission to create its regulations that must comply with state statutes. Your local regulations are then written to direct what happens in your town, and then courts provide a legal review of your regulations and your actions. Um, on a federal level, you know, the the basis of court decisions and the constitutional basic basis of zoning, uh, was established in nineteen twenty-six. Court decision that upheld the zoning ordinance enacted by the village of Euclid, Ohio. Many of you have heard um, term Euclidian zoning, which really refers to sort of a used base zoning structure that we, um, have. Um, the base, the backstory on the on the court case was that there was this company, Ambler Realty Company, which purchased some sixty-eight acres of land in the village of Euclid, Ohio to develop that land as industrial. The village, however, did not like that, and they went in and zoned this land residential, which re- restricted significantly the types of uh, uses and and buildings that Ambler Realty could then build and construct on on their land. So they filed a suit. They claimed unconstitutional violation of due process and that it was taken without just compensation. And at first, the federal district court agreed and issued an injunction against the enforcement of the ordinance. However, on an appeal, the U.S. Superior Court court concluded that speculative damages claimed by Ambler were insufficient to invalidate an otherwise valid exercise of the village's police power and essentially established zoning as we know it. Um, on the state level, courts provide local land use official officials with wide and liberal discretion, and that's because courts really feel that you l- l- local residents and local Commissioners are best equipped to do that, and you are. Um, s- so, and they will not really interfere in local matters, courts will not, unless the commission act in an illegal way. And when we talk about, you know, illegal commission acts, what are we really talking about? We're we're talking about the failure to follow procedures at fourth in the general statutes and clear breach of duty, which means acting in arbitrary or capricious manner. I will, like I said, provide these slides to you, so you will have these definitions and, um, all of this information available after. So, the next question, let's see if this works now, would be, what land use board or commission are you on? And again, I'm skipping this because I know that you're all actually Planning and Zoning Commission, so I apologize for even having this slide. There are essentially, however, two different type type of, uh, w- land use commissions. There are the regulatory ones, which include planning zoning, ZBA, Inland Wetlands Historic and Aquifer Protection Agency, and then there are all other ones. And depending on, you know, if you're lucky enough to have a town with a lot of volunteers, you can pretty much create a commission on anything, as long as they're non-regulatory commissions. Um, some examples are shown on the slide, conservation, economic development, um, agricultural commissions. Those are all non-regular types of commissions. Okay. So, which of the following does the state of Connecticut require municipalities to have? And if this slide doesn't work, then I'll ask you to respond in the chat. Alright, so I don't see any responses being logged in, so I will just ask you at this point to please, um, answer in chat so that we have at least a little bit of communicate. Oh! There you go. Somebody got in. Okay, I stand corrected. So let's let's use polling. It's it's more fun. Alright, so these are interesting responses, and I will tell you that I always get a lot of questions and a lot of answers just like this. The correct answer, however, is Inland Wetlands and Water Course's agency. That is the only agency that a state of Connecticut requires, uh, towns to have. And that is because back in nineteen eighty-eight, um, back in seventies and eighties, actually, uh, after the, uh, the Environmental Protection Act, uh, was, um, approved, the state of Connecticut understood, the DEP understood that they did not have capacity to enforce inland lands regulations in all hundred and sixty-nine towns, so they passed that over to towns as an unfounded mandate. Most of you are on combined planning and zoning commission. I am going to now talk about, um, different commissions and just what, um, what they do. Um, understanding that if you're on the Planning and Zoning Commission that's combined, you're wearing your zoning hat when you're acting on adopting of zoning regulations, zoning maps. Mm, in most cases, special permits, special exceptions, site plans, all those are zoning hat, and you wear it under Title Eight, Chapter One Twenty-Four of General Statutes. When you are looking at your Plan of Conservation and Development, when you're reviewing when you're reviewing applications for subdivisions and re-subdivisions, you're wearing your planning commission hat. Um, in some towns that have split zoning and planning commissions, the zoning commission delegates authority to act on special permits and special exceptions to the planning commission, but you obviously don't need to worry about that. Your ZBA acts on appeals from the zoning enforcement officer decisions and variances. In some towns, they also act on special permits and expansion and ex- exceptions, which is the same thing, and special exemptions from density requirements for certain affordable housing units. Inland wetlands commission act on anything that's related to wetlands. Um, they also have some incidental powers. I will not go very deep into any of this stuff, but as I said, you will have this available to you in the slide deck that I provide. You do not have Aquifer Protection Agency, or you are not an Aquifer Protection Agency, so this doesn't pertain to you either. Um, historic commission, one thing that's interesting with the historic commission is that they have powers to accept grants and gifts and employ consultant, employ help. This is uh not similar to other commissions. Other commissions, I don't believe, have a statutory authority to do this. And they have many other things that they do. And then Conservation Commission researches the utilization or possible utilization of land areas. Um, they are regulated under Section Seven, One Thirty-One A of General Statute. Sometimes in some towns, Conservation Commission is also inland wetlands commission, so they wear like two hats. All this is important to know because when you're acting on application that's before you, you want to consider things that you can consider under the authority that you're acting, right? So if you're reviewing an application for the subdivision, you are looking at your subdivision regulations, your zoning regulations, and perhaps some other ordinances, but those are your charges. In those instances, you would not necessarily be reviewing anything that pertains to something that is, you know, a charge of the historic commission or a charge of the wetlands commission, aside from getting reviews and um reports from them. So when you're drafting regulations, which capacity does commission serve in? Is it administration, police, judicial, legislative, or parliamentary? There you go. Okay, so seventy-five percent of you is correct. It is your legislative power. And what you're doing really is you're creating the law for your community. You're creating regulations and maps that are regulatory in your community. Um. When you're reviewing development applications, however, like special permits and site plans, you're actually acting in an administrative capacity. And when you're hearing appeals, commission is acting in quasi-judicial capacity. Now, what that means and what what why that that matters is that this is related to the level of discretion that you have when you're acting on different things. So when you're acting on your regulation amendments and zone changes, you have a really broad discretion. This kind of goes back to what I said when I said the courts will let you um do your um do your local business without interfering too much, as long as you stick and you're compliant with um general statute. So when you're creating your regulation amendments, you are enacting your laws in your communities, as long as that law complies with what's in general statutes, you're you're good, and you have a lot of discretion to consider various things. When you're acting on special permits, you're actually having a little bit more limited discretion. And that's because at this point, you're looking at a use that's allowed in a zoning district subject to special review that is outlined, that uh conditions for that are outlined in your zoning regulations. With site plans and similarly with subdivisions, you really don't have a discretion. If the proposal meets regulations, it needs to be approved. So again, regulations, broad discretion, court will allow you um wide discretion there. They must be consistent with legislative purposes set in general statute. Special permits or special exceptions, decision must be consistent with criteria that are set in your regulations because special permit is generally a compatible use in a zoning district, but because of the nature of the proposed use, a special exception, special attention must be given to its location and method of operation in order to keep such special uses compatible with uses as of right in that district. I focus on this a lot because acting on special exception or special permits sometimes get conflicted with acting on variances, and I'll get back to that in a moment, but those are essentially two quite different things. Keep um on thinking that special permit is generally a allowed use. A variance is something completely different. And variances are also quite not unders- well, understand. Um, they are, however, to be granted sparingly, and Attorney Ziska, who wrote a very wildly um red book called What's Legally Required, uh says a variance is actually a license to violate zoning regulations, meaning variance is given to something that's non-permitted in your regulations. When you're looking at a variance, which you're not, but I'm pointing this out because of the differences between acting on site plans and special permits versus things um such as variances is that on variances, you're looking for unusual or exceptional circumstances relevant to the land um that the application is filed for. Again, um, special permit deals with uses that are permitted, but just need a special review. As I said, site plan, on third hand, there is really no discretion. Um, you are looking at an use that's permitted as of right in the particular area. So your reviews is really within the confines of the property. You would be looking at, you know, does this grading meets our regulations? Is the curb cut to the property a position in in the location that allows uh site visibility for traffic ingress and access? You're looking at those kind of things. And if it does, then uh it it has to be approved. Um, when is a public hearing by a commission required? Let's see what you think here. So is it when required by state statute or when required by your regulations? Can city council or mayor or order a commission to hold a hearing? Um, can you hold it whenever you want? Alright, so I'm assuming that people are responding, and I'm not seeing responses for some reason.
I think you need to stay on that.
It says locked.
Yeah, you need to stay on that last um slide, otherwise we get locked out from voting.
Okay, alright, um, so we'll we'll just proceed from here on. I do apologize for the polling thing. It is the only thing that I'm allowed to use, and it's not a super friendly. These are the correct responses, when required by statutes, when required by regulations. And really, as a commission, you can hold public hearings on pretty much anything that you want, as long as it's related to your charge as a commission. So these are, again, the responses. And ZBA must hold a public hearing on everything that comes before them. Now, Planning and Zoning Commission holds a hearing or must hold a hearing on the zone and regulation changes. These are types of application that you must hold hearings on. Adoption or amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development, special permits, re-subdivision, but not subdivision. And then you may require public hearings in your regulations for site plans or subdivisions. However, you must be mindful that holding a hearing does not extend your timeframe. And there are different statutory timeframes for different types of applications. So if you have a hearing, your timeframes are longer. If you're not having a hearing, your timeframe on to act on an application is only sixty-five days. When conducting a public hearing, no specific requirements are really exist, nothing in statutes uh that talks about your order of speaking. Ex- fact, really applicant should always be allowed to go first so that they can explain what the application is about. All materials should be available for public inspection. I would imagine that in today's day and age, everything is um posted online or otherwise available to public. So this really is probably not an issue anymore. Um, hearings must be recorded. Parties should be allowed to ask questions of presenters, and time limits may be placed. So if you're running a meeting and there is a super controversial application, and you know that you will have people just come there and talk for twenty minutes, as a commission, you can set timeline limits um on initial presentations. I will say though that if somebody wants to talk twice, they should be given an opportunity to do that, even if they exhausted their initial five or three minutes of talking. You also, as a commission, may ask people not to repeat themselves, not to repeat previous people's statements, you know, things like that, to ease your way and bring some of the most controversial, most talked about matters to to closure, to end. Before closing public hearings, um, you need to know that you don't want to close the hearing if you have any questions. So you make your decisions based only on what you heard at the public hearing and what's available for, you know, for everybody to see before the hearing is closed. So all the information that you need, you should make sure you get before the hearing is closed. No new information is allowed after a public hearing is closed. There is a very limited amount of stuff that your s- your planning staff can provide for you, but it should not be any new information, that that should not be anything that's new that people haven't heard, that the applicant doesn't have a chance to respond to. You cannot ignore uncontradicted expert testimony if you don't question it. So I'll give you this scenario. I think pretty much everybody has been in a meeting where a developer's traffic engineer would stand there and say, this cost call will create no impact to neighboring intersection of streets. When, you know, you know that they did, based on their testimony, they did their calculation at a time when kids are out of the school, and there is a lot of families and 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 people on that street that travel there normally. So you don't account for school buses, you don't account for that like normal traffic. They're doing, they're conducting their traffic assessments during the vacation time. Or uh you travel that street for your work, and you are aware that, you know, they did their traffic counts at six AM, but the street is busiest at nine AM, you know, things like that. So if you know something like that, you must question it, and you must ask it and state it during the time that the public hearing is open. If you have any special expertise, you should say that on the record too. So let's say you happen to be traffic engineer, or your new commissioner is um, she has an architectural expertise. That should be disclosed if it's of relevance to, you know, this building is built in a way that um does not, you know, does not work for this reason or that reason. So all those things should be state stated while the hearing is still open. Um, the hearing once closed, it cannot really be reopened until unless reopening occurs before anyone has left the hearing room, which is increasingly complicated, especially if you're running um your meetings online or to some extent online. Um, the chairperson of a planning and zoning commission, can they appoint whomever here or she chooses to be an alternate? So is this true or false? Excellent, so all of you know this, so this is false. Nobody can um appoint a person to be an alternate. There are organizational statutes for planning and zoning commission that talk about how this is to be done. Um, essentially, to go back to that question, the appointment of alternates for planning and zoning commission should be in your ordinance, and that's what is stated in um CGS one B, eight point one B. There was um Public Act in twenty twenty-three, which actually allowed doubling of um, you know, before it was not allowed for a person to be on both planning commission and the zoning commission. But that can be a case now for an alternate member to serve on the zoning commission or zoning board of appeals. They must recuse themselves uh from participation in any appeal before the zoning board of appeals if there that there is a decision on the planning commission that such alternate member participated in that decision. So this pertains to the planning commission and the ZBA. And I think the this was done because in most of our communities, we are running short of volunteers. Uh, so there are people that need to need to serve on more than just one board or one commission. This, however, is um not something that used to be a practice up until twenty twenty-three, or not to, it wasn't allowed up until twenty twenty-three. Which of the following statements are generally true? An alternate who has not been seated should not participate in deliberations. A commissioner who was replaced by an alternate for a public hearing cannot vote. A commissioner cannot replace a seated alternate after deliberations have started. The chairman may not vote, except in a case of a tie, or an abstention counts as a no vote. Okay, good. So we have differing answers here. An alternate who has not been seated should not participate in the deliberations. A seated alternate is like a full regular commission member. When seated, they deliberate, they make decisions, they're a full member. The commissioner that is replacing a seated alternate after deliberations have started, that also is not um something that can, that should be done. Um after deliberations start, the only commissioners that participated in hearing before should continue at that point. This notion of an abstention counts as a no vote is erroneous as well. Um or there, actually, it's not an error. It's highlighted in red because there is apparently a court case that says an abstention counts as a no vote. And then there is another court case that says an abstention counts as a yes vote. So what we say as a best practice is try to not abstain. If you feel that you won't be able to render a decision for whatever reason on an application, like we talked at the beginning, if you have some strong feelings about something, get an alternate to sit in your case rather than waiting until everything is done and then abstain, abstaining from voting just because, you know, you feel some kind of way about it or you cannot make a decision. Uh the next thing I wanted to touch on is sidewalks. I heard that you did one this morning. And from everything that I heard, it looks like you don't even need my training on that. Sidewalks are meetings. They have been advertised in the one that you did this morning. Um meetings may include gatherings of less than a quorum of the agency. So it doesn't really matter um how many people you have conducting sidewalks. They should always be noticed for the FOIA requirements. And you should do it as a group. You should not try and do this thing uh that some ZBAs and some towns do when they go one and then another one and then another one. Um sidewalks that occur after the commencement of public hearings must be recorded. When you are conducting a sidewalk, you could, you should stick together. You should refrain from engaging in deliberations, in talking about things. You know, now if you are on a forty acre site and you need to find a flag number twenty-one, you're more than welcome and you should be asking these sort of directional questions like, okay, what's on the east of me, what's on the west of me, where am I on the site? But um you should refrain from comments or questions and rather take notes that are pertinent to the, to the proposal, right? And then take notes and ask those when you are again back in the town hall, back at the hearing where everybody can hear and understand what you're asking and uh everybody has the same information, which is one of those things that I show on earlier slide as a portion of what's important when it comes to being fair. Being fair is about everybody having a same information um when it comes to the public matters. Some basics on running a meeting. Your chair is always in control. There really should be no speaking unless and until a commissioner is recognized by a chair and this is also um, this also applies to public. Um you may want to let everybody knows the rules. Like when we started this meeting, Krista outlined, you know, some rules for us for our meeting. This is really helpful. There are some commissions that have public hearing rules or just general meeting rules that are read at the beginning of the meeting. It's really helpful so that everybody knows what the quorum and conduct should be. Uh there should be no interruptions, there should be no talking to each other from commissioner to commissioner, but also, you know, if you are in a town where um, a smaller town where people know each other and then you have somebody um commenting on a proposal that's before you and then that person's neighbor makes a comment and they start engaging in direct one-on-one con- conversation, that's not okay. Everybody should talk to and through chair and chairs should recognize each person speaking. Crowd control and hostility, this is also sometimes when we have controversial application, the crowd control can be a, a, a little bit of an issue. It is your role as a commissioner to kind of be mindful of that, to not instigate it in any kind of way. And uh watch out for hostility. You do have options. If you have somebody who is obstructing your business on a commission, you may ask them to leave, you may reset the meeting. You can, if you have time, continue perhaps at the later date. But you certainly have ability to um do things about people that come and try to interrupt your, your business. Ultimately, when you think about public, they are there to observe you do your business as a commission. Um you know, in a public hearing setting, they're there also to conduct testimony. But those are their roles. They're either providing a testimony or they're there to watch you do your business as a commission. So keep that in mind and be prepared to react if you run into any kind of issue with crowd control. And try to run efficient meeting. I don't know if this is a case in New Canaan, but as a planner, I have sat in some meetings that went on until very, very late in night or perhaps next morning. This is not optimal. Nobody makes a good decision at like two AM or even eleven thirty PM. Uh so try to run efficient meeting as much as possible. And follow the meeting logistics. We're talking about, you know, everybody want, needs to have the same information and access to it. So when somebody is presenting to you, make sure that everybody can hear what they're saying, everybody can see the maps that are being shown, you know, that sort of stuff. Whether that's a meeting online like this one or a meeting in person, um, you know, it doesn't really matter. If you are doing an online meeting, you want to be on camera. You want people to know that it is you when you're speaking. Um, all of that stuff is important. And follow the rules. Know your regulations, know your um, your limits of power and conduct in those bounds. And that will hopefully eliminate some of this extra strength time on hold that I included on the slide. Um, I will ask you um to do a little survey on this, but we can do this after question, I think. So at this point, I'm just going to pause for a second and um this is the end conclusion of my presentation. So if anybody has question for me, I'm more than happy to answer them. And I'm not hearing anybody.
Alright, I have, I'll start. I have a question. Um, so you said that we can't ignore on, uncontradicted expert testimony if we don't question it during the public hearing, which I understand that statement. But my question is, do we need the opinion of another expert to contradict it? Or can we ourselves as the commission, if we raise it in the public hearing, contradict it and say, we, we don't think you're right? Because, you know, we drive through that intersection every day and we notice something different.
So I think that there may be a different uh rules when it comes to traffic. But, and, and these are pretty recent, if, if they're even, if they even exist, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um what we train and you content to my training was collected by um number of pro bono attorneys that actually help clear. Um, in our training, those attorneys up until perhaps year and a half ago have always said it's okay for you as a resident to question the testimony and use your knowledge of the area to act on that. Uh for further on this, I would direct you to your town attorney just to make sure that there are no brand new laws pertaining to this.
Hi Ira, so just, just to clarify, I'm thinking, I mean, I'm trying to think of the specific situation. It might have been Saint Luke's earlier this year, I can't remember exactly which application, but actually, I do think it had to do with traffic and it was with Saint Luke's. Um and we heard from a traffic engineer who claimed that the solution they were presenting to us was going to resolve all of the traffic issues on North Wilton Road. And we had several commissioners say, I don't think that's true, you know, I don't believe you. But none of the commissioners were actually traffic professionals themselves. And so when the time came to vote, there were people who wanted to deny or condition based on their own feeling that what the traffic engineer had said was possibly not true. But we didn't have any other expert come before us and say it wasn't true. So it was just kind of like an expert versus the commission's, you know, opinion. And I, I wasn't clear if we were able to make a decision based on our opinion.
Um, sure, well, sure, I'll, uh, excuse me. I'll weigh in here. I'm Ira Blue, Pete Gelderman, I think is here. Um, from the town attorney's office, uh Nick Pomante unfortunately couldn't make it last minute. Um, I'll just thank Renata for that excellent presentation and we're happy to try to answer some questions. Um, I, I, I'm surprised to Saint Luke's if you didn't have at least a peer review because really um that's kind of the, the first rule here with any complication, with any application of any um consequence. Um, we should, we should make it routine. I think it is fairly routine. Uh so was there, was there none on that application? Because that, that's where you have some professional who can, who can counter it. Um, and the applicant of course pays for it. So I mean, that's, that's one, one approach which I think you should undertake almost always. If there's any, if there's gonna be any controversy, uh you can rely on your own firsthand knowledge if it's, if it's applicable and relevant. But um if you're presented with traffic counts and things like that and, and there's no, no opposition or anything like that, uh that, that's gonna be hard just to simply, you know, deny it without any substantial evidence in the record. Pete, you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I think the key there is the, what the phrase you just used, Ira, substantial evidence. Um, you know, there are competing kind of thoughts here. The commission is allowed to um use its own knowledge of things. Um but on the other hand, its decision needs to be supported usually by substantial evidence, which we typically think of as expert testimony. So in that case, um Krist, if you, if you denied the application based solely on traffic and there was no other reason to do it, um and there was no substantial evidence in the record, you know, a court might say, sorry, that, that's not a good enough reason, even though people have personal knowledge about that traffic. Um, um, if it's not the only reason, you know, you only have to have one reason. That's, that a court finds to be substantiated to, uh to prevail in a lawsuit. But um, you know, that's, that's a tough situation if there's no competing substantial evidence in the record.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other questions, guys?
John, Chris, Mr. Chris, uh in such a case, um and the commission believed there were concerns, traffic concerns on this situation, this particular example, that the um, I would assume that the uh good practice would be for the commissioner or the commission to require the applicant to hire uh perhaps a, another um uh traffic engineer to look at it. Uh or the commissioner itself would hire one and charge the applicant and see what that person has to say to provide uh alternate expert.
It would be the latter, that the commission would hire the consultants to do a peer review, sometimes a full, something more than a peer review, uh and the applicant would pay for it. But it would be, it would be your choice, usually through staff. That would be something Sarah would, would do, uh get somebody on board to assist the commission.
Yeah, and that's, that was the process that was followed when we hired the um peer reviewers for all the eight thirty Gs. Um, the challenges, I think in that particular case, um is just the commission has to know during the public hearing that they have doubt about the testimony. So, you know, timing is important and, you know, getting ahead of it as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that came out during the deliberation and at that point it was too late to have any sort of peer review.
It, it, in, in other towns, it, it almost becomes routine. Except for perhaps the smallest of applications where you might just see if you need it. In most other applications, um, the, you know, standard operating procedure would be, yes, let's, let's get on board our, our, our own peer review consultant. So sometimes you send out bids, sometimes you use the same person that you've used in the past. Um, you know, you, you give that person uh the scope of duty, get, get an estimate, get a check from the applicant and then, and then hopefully you're ready to go by the first, maybe the second public hearing.
And the other part of that, um of Renata's point there is, and I've seen this, um where a public hearing takes place and there's a member on the board or commission um who listens and doesn't say anything or doesn't dispute anything. And then you get into deliberations and all of a sudden uh someone says, you know, I have a master's degree in um that and I think, and uh, you know, as Renata pointed out, that's a problem because an applicant um has no opportunity to rebut that at that point in time. So, and that, I've actually seen that case happen. It was a wetland matter in, in another town, one that we didn't represent. Um and I was, I was representing um an applicant. And all of a sudden during deliberations, one of the members of the uh wetland commission was an expert. Um, so it, it, it was um, you know, that's one of the reasons if somebody is an expert or if somebody has any particular knowledge of something, they need to bring it up during the, during the public hearing.
My experience has been when you, let's say, have two experts, one is hired by the applicant and one is hired by the uh commission paid for by the applicant. And let's say they say chalk and cheese uh in their views. Um, if a commissioner uh sort of puts his or her faith in one of them, you have to state it very clearly. I am relying on this person because for reasons X, Y, and Z. Uh and state these things very clearly uh because we want that in the record and the whys and wherefores is my understanding.
It's, it's more important, John, that the commission makes that collective statement as opposed to an individual commissioner. There should be a collective statement if that's the case, as part of the resolution. The commission should say, we find, uh because you do have the right to judge the credibility and the um, you know, of, of even expert witnesses, so. But, but.
But you're right. The, the resolutions become exceedingly important and a, a, again, in a more complicated situation where there's a chance of an appeal, likelihood of an appeal. You're turning something down perhaps, but, but the resolution spelled out with, with reasoning and the collective statement uh i- i- is important, not just a collection of individuals saying, I think this, I think that, alright, let's vote. Uh you wanna, you wanna put it together, uh even if it means two sessions to deliberate. One to discuss it, see where you end up. Uh, ask ask Sarah to to go back and and give you a draft. And then at the second deliberation session, you would look at it again, kind of line by line, make sure that expresses the collective statement from at least a majority and and then vote. After you've gone through it and discuss it. And then just to get back to John's point, just to make it even more complicated, often you get an intervenor who finds their own expert. And so then you may have at least three.
Um, and I will just, I think if I may add to the point that Ira just made, one of the practices that you could consider as a commission is having your staff pre-write your motions. Because what what where where these decisions are challenged is really at the end, what was stated in during the decision-making process. And if you have motions that perhaps Sarah pre-write for you, then you don't get lost and somebody made a motion and then somebody forgot to second that and then the third person forget to put in the reasons for the decision. Um, so that sometimes is helpful, um, if if you if you want to consider it. As a commission, you should like you you may think about doing something like that.
To that end, um, do now that everything is, I guess videotaped, right? And I mean, I I guess in the past you would you would request a a transcript in the appeals that you see. Is the judge relying primarily on the written resolution or do the deliberations and the videos of deliberations, the transcripts of the deliberations um often get entered into um evidence in in terms of maybe uh uh one commissioner made an arbitrary and capricious statement and then that was used against them, even though the the resolution might have said something later differently?
Well, uh, in in every case, the transcript uh is provided to the judge. It's part of the record that we have to provide uh before the court decides. So the judge will always get the transcript. Uh, and um, I I think the starting point for most judges would be the resolution. But um, I I do believe that many, most of the judges will uh will will go through the transcript and 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 read it and and digest the whole record. Uh, so and then make a decision. But I I do think the starting point is the resolution. If it if it clearly articulates the the collective statement, cites a substantial evidence, uh, you know, you're off to a good a good start, I would hope. You know, there could always be one one commissioner that makes a, you know, crazy statement here or there. Uh, not on this commission, of course, but it could happen in in other places. Um, but I I, you know, hopefully hopefully that that doesn't sway the others and it can be dismissed if if it's pointed out by the opposition.
One one thing to know is if you state reasons in the record for your decision, then the court is gonna only consider those reasons and see if those reasons are supported by substantial evidence. If for some reason there are no reasons, and there should always be reasons, but if there aren't, then the court is obligated to search the record to find evidence that supports the decision as opposed to supports the reasons. So um it's a little harder for a judge to do that if there are no reasons. Once you give reasons, though, that's what the court is going to look at.
Just want to go back to Renata's point about uh a pre-written uh resolution. A number of years ago, there were we had, we worked with planners that when they started the deliberation session, they 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 would say, well, you know what, I'm gonna I'm gonna prepare a resolution of approval and I'm gonna prepare a resolution of denial. To be fair, you can't just walk in with a resolution of approval before the commission has said anything about it. That that that's not good. Uh, so the planner would do would do both, uh, and then sort of put them both before the commission. I I think we've moved away from that, Pete, um, at least in our towns. And what we prefer is to have some general discussion. After the pub- after the public portion, uh, the public hearing is closed. And then go to some discussion among the commissioners. What do you think? You know, what's everyone thinking here? And then get a consensus, then ask the planner, Sarah, to do a draft consistent with what you where you're going, either positive or negative and why. And then she could prepare that. We often help. Uh, and then come back a second time and you'll have something consistent with your earlier discussions. It does it does require an additional meeting to do it like that. And it's not always necessary for something that's straightforward, simple and all that. Um, but it it does help on something that's more complicated, more likely to be appealed to court.
And I would I would just add, I think, you know, from my perspective, I think we have done that on the applications where I think we we have a feeling it may be headed towards an appeal. Um, we we obviously don't do it on the very simple application. So I I do think you know, the commission can hang their hat a little bit on the fact that we do have a process for that. Um, but always we should, you know, look at it, make sure we're pleased with how we're handling it.
I mean, my my experience has been that ultimately it's what the commission decides and its final ruling. But that if there's a question regarding a expert testimony or the the commission a commissioner has questions on this or another question, I would just say, I would encourage that person to bring it up and don't assume it's gonna happen by some other means. Because you may miss your window and you wanna sort of get the ball rolling so it can be discussed by the commission. Get a sense of, is this an issue for the commission? And then uh you can take it from there. Um, uh, because once conversation is trying to move on to different topics, you know, it can be difficult to to return to um an issue of concern. So you wanna bring these things up and vet them.
I don't wanna step on any toes if other people have questions, but if you don't, I'm gonna bring up another topic. Um, Renata talked about us acting in our administrative capacity and the amount of discretion we have when issuing special permits. And I was wondering if either Renata or the town attorneys can talk a little more about the boundaries of that discretion, like just because we have discretion, how far can we go? I mean, what what can we require versus what can we not? Does it have to be in our regulations? Does it have to be in our P O C D? Or could we just say, we really like the color blue, you know, please paint your building blue because that's what we want? Like, I that's a frivolous example, but you're getting hopefully you're getting the sense of what I'm asking is how far, how much discretion do we have?
I think I may start the answer and then I'll defer to your attorneys for that. Your discretionary level is directly related to your criteria, which are in your regulations. They, your special permit criteria should be outlined in your regulations, whether that's by zoning district or whether you have a general section that talks about special permits or special exception. When writing those criteria, that's a different um conversation, right? The criteria for your special exception or special permits, you you need to make sure that they comply with statutes. But as long as you have criteria and those criteria are legal, then you are acting on use based on what's supported by those criteria or what's not supported by those criteria. So there is a direct relationship between special permit criteria and you're acting on it. Again, you know, I kind of wanted to stress this. The difference between when you're looking at hardship and a variance, which is for something that's not permitted in that zoning district. And when you're looking at a use that by its nature or by its conduct requires a special attention. And then those criteria should be outlined.
And and those criteria are typically health, safety and welfare-related criteria that would be in your regulations. So for example, I mean, just to give you a hypothetical, Krista, uh, you know, a special permit use might be in a residential zone. Um, might be a school uh or or some other kind of large building, a hospital, whatever it might be.
Sure.
Criteria need to be um um set forth in the regulations, for example, with respect to maybe um whether it's traffic, hours of operation, noise, light, things that might be of con- of concern to the commission. Those things have to be set forth.
I'm sorry, set forth where in the regulations you said?
In 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 the regs and then because you you can't condition a special permit on something that's not in the regulations.
Right.
Or deny it based on something that's not in the regulations.
And and Renata did a good job uh on the spectrum, let's say, of discretion. You have the most in your legislative capacity with zone text changes. Uh, you have the least, almost none, perhaps, perhaps just not, perhaps none, uh, with the site plan. Uh, and special permit is somewhere in the middle there. Uh, but as Pete indicated, there there's a limit to the discretion based upon the wording of the regulations.
Regarding that, we're about to embark on a essentially a wholesale review of our zoning regulations. And so in many cases, we'll be taking out a clean sheet or paper and thinking about things. So for example, on a special permit, you know, how how didactic can we be in outlining what some of these criteria would be? You know, can we say, you know, what colors can you use? I I know there have been discussions on white versus ivory versus off-white uh in the commission, um, these types of issues. So how what things are sort of no-go ones which are appropriate and how narrowly can we write these things?
I'll just jump in really quickly. I know with the color conversation, just for background, we do have a village district in our downtown. So I think the color questions are more popping up when we're um dealing with the village district, not necessarily with um special permit applications.
Okay.
Also, just relating to the zoning regulation update, I've been doing a deep dive of the regulations just, you know, to get ourselves ready. And some of our special permit criteria that we have in the regulations are copy and pasted from the nineteen thirty-two zoning regulations. So um, you know, the commission is probably going to need to reevaluate a lot of that. And um, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think the majority of all of the special permit criteria date back to no no more recent than the nineteen eighties. So, you know, the we have pretty outdated special permit criteria, I would say.
Yeah, and John, that's that's probably a question that's way too complicated to be answered tonight. Um, it it's a it's a complicated question. You also, obviously, as we've talked about in the past, have to look at your kind of uh regulations that permit things that would otherwise be illegal if you get a special permit. Uh, that's that's kind of one of the things Renata was talking about there. You can't waive your regulations by way of a special permit. Um, so and and that's something that when you redo the regs, there are a few examples of that. We've talked about those over the over the course of the last few years. So that's something to look at.
Well, my recollection is that waiving regulations since both Commissioner Engel and I were used to be on the zoning board of appeals. Um, that's when you waive regulations and that you have to have, it's a fairly narrow uh reasoning you have to have in order to waive a regulation has to be establishment of a true hardship.
Right.
And the remedy of the hardship.
Right. And but unfortunately, the regulations as they stand now gives this commission some ability in some cases to do that and it and they shouldn't. So.
What I'm hearing, uh, sir, is that that is probably something we should be considering in this coming effort of ours.
Yes, and I know Sarah's aware of that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
But is there a difference between, say, waiving a regulation and modifying one if it's essentially could you put a parameter on the extent of a modification of a regulation?
Well.
Right, a modification of if height limit is twenty-five feet, but under you meet this criteria, you can have a building that's fifty-five feet.
Yes, you can have something like that because that the regulations allow it then in that event. Um, if you have a specific um situation where the height can be increased or the coverage can be increased and there are specific circumstances that allow it, sometimes regulations allow you to expand your coverage if you um uh save an historic structure. And so you, in exchange for saving that structure, you get a bump up in in um coverage, for example, that's not uh as long as the standard is fixed and known and everybody understands what it is and what cer- situations it applies, it's kind of then it's typically okay. Um, but if you if you say, uh, you know, it this by special permit, this building, we may be able to look at this building where the height regulation in your example, Eric, is twenty-five feet. By special permit, we can raise it to thirty-five feet. Well, there's no criteria there. I mean, that then, um, no applicant knows. Am I gonna am I gonna be able to do that or not? So that's an inappropriate use of a special permit.
But I guess my question, and I I appreciate that and I understand that right, you have to have your criteria, your findings to achieve, you know, for us to make to to rationally, you know, move a a a special permit. I guess my question is maybe more semantically in the sense of right, if I if I if we say, you know, you twenty-five can go up to thirty-five, but if we don't have a thirty-five foot cap, if we say we can just modify the regulations, provided you make, you know, criteria A, B, C, and it could be forty-five feet, fifty-five feet, sixty-five feet, does does the addition of a cap a predicted, you know, potential limit on a special permit? Uh, does that keep it within the realm of being a special permit as opposed to a variance?
The the real, I I think the the real key concept here, as Peter said, is to have criteria. So you can modify standards of your zoning regulations, but you must have a very specific situations, very specific criteria that allow you to do that. You see that a lot with lands landscaping. You know, on a corner lot, you need to have so many trees, but if the slot is of such size and of such thing and you plant these other kind of plants, you may reduce or increase by thirty percent. So there there needs to be a very specific set of standards that allows you to modify regulations versus a variance, which is a different thing.
Right. Um, can can I ask another question? Um, so we, in the presentation, you discussed um kind of the the powers of the Z B A and the powers of a planning and zoning commission. Um, I know under our regulations, the Z B A and Sarah, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is really, it grants variances and it, you know, grants appeals. Do we, you know, going to Commissioner Chris and the the potential overhaul of of some of the zoning regulations, do we have it within our power to give the Z B A basically more on their plate in terms of special permits, special exceptions, those sort of approvals and is and to what extent can, it's like a site plan approval, for example, and to what extent, you know, can they take that on, you know, under under state statute? But what can they do and what can't they do in kind of the special permit realm is really what I'm asking.
Special permits is the answer here.
That's not side.
If the regulation gives that, the the statutes allow Z B As to grant special exceptions, which is the same thing as a special permit. Um, if that power is delegated to them by the planning and zoning commission. But I I would think long and hard about whether or not you wanna do that.
Yeah, we I I don't think we see that too often.
A couple towns I'm aware of, but I
Yeah.
th- that's an important function of of the, in my mind, anyway, the planning and zoning commission. But you you have that right to delegate that to the zoning board of appeals, but not site plans, not subdivisions, no nothing else, just special exceptions. In addition to their power to grant variances and hear appeals.
And I will chime in that, uh, and you know, please, Ira or Peter, correct me if this is wrong, but you can also parse special exception for certain uses that are delegated to the Z B A. This has to be in your regulations.
Right.
Versus special permits or special exceptions that go to the planning and zoning commission. City of Meriden, in which I worked, sends a lot of special exceptions to their zoning board of appeals. I would also say that that's perhaps not the best practice. ZBAs really are best when they are focused on variances and appeals.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah.
As a staff person for both, yeah, I would, as a staff person for both commissions, I would, I would say they wear very different hats and, you know, in New Canaan specifically, it doesn't necessarily make sense.
It may be allowed, but it seems like there's an illogic to it. But I guess it's done in some towns.
My own experience has been that an applicant usually will not go to planning and zoning to get a permit and then, let's say it's denied, and then go to ZBA. Usually, they will speak with the planner, Miss Carey, and they will be directed to maybe zoning board of appeals directly. You know, for example, if you're in a two-acre zone and you have a half-acre lot and you basically can't do anything because you're going to be in the setbacks or something else, you know, you would probably claim hardship because of that. And I've seen this in ZBA applications where you have grossly undersized lots, half is ledge and half is wetlands and something like this, and, you know, you you come to some kind of decision as opposed to go to one first and then go to the second, see if you get a better answer. That's been my experience.
Right. I think that's the more traditional approach by people.
Related to that, though, how do we prevent, because I think sometimes we end up getting text amendment changes to the Planning and Zoning Commission to change our regulations because somebody really doesn't want to go through the ZBA process. They'd rather change the regulations and come to us than go through to ZBA.
That's fine.
And I mean, I guess that's probably legal, but it kind of seems like an end run around what the intent is.
So I'll see this up for, for Pete and Ira. It's the legal landscape for obtaining a variance is getting harder and harder in the state of Connecticut every day. So as a staff person, I'm telling applicants, ZBA is a last resort, just given the climate of variances.
And sometimes variances actually make more sense than changing regulations. But as a commission, you have responsibility to review your regulations as for that zoning district, not just for that one property. So when you have these regulations amendments, like that is one important focus that takes away somebody just not wanting to go for a variance because they will not get it and bringing it to you because you have that authority to look at that entire zoning district rather than just this one person's need or want.
Can I go back to Krista's comment about text changes? And then Pete, if you want to talk briefly about some of the fairly recent cases on on ZBAs, we might as well put that out there just briefly. But i- it's very interesting how, you know, towns differ. The town of Westport, where we've served for 27 years, it is quite common to have a text change accompany applications. I'm trying to think, I bet they have a a text change on an average once a month. Maybe that's slightly exaggerated, maybe, you know, six or eight times a year, perhaps. And that's just how it's approached, maybe because of the difficulty in getting a variance. But people have projects and and they say, you know what, I just can't quite fit into that regulation. I'm going to propose a text change. And many of them get passed. So now that's not common. Some other towns haven't changed their regulations since, you know, 1932. But in Westport, they get changed regularly. So it's just a kind of a different.
To Renata's point that she made, I mean, when we're making a text change, we should be looking at how this text change impacts the overall district. And a lot of what we see, or at least I've seen in my time on the commission, is, okay, well, we're going to add a section that says if you have a three-acre lot with 250 feet of frontage on a state road and a left turn, you know, like, it's so specific that it really isn't applying to everything else in the district. They've written their text change to apply to this specific lot. And that feels not like zoning to me.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting issue. Some people call that spot texting as opposed to spot zoning.
Right.
But generally speaking, you want to, you don't want to have a regulation that cannot be applied to any other property. There was a case up in in by the airport where a text, there was a change in a text that allowed for a property to have airport parking. And it was the only property on the road at that time that could have airport parking. And but, but it was also possible for other lots in the future, you know, to have it, to merge and have it. There's, there needs to be a, at least a possibility or or, you know, there has to be some other property that could be affected by that text change within the district. Otherwise, it is, it is kind of granting a variance by by text change. There's one judge, I remember you and I appear before Judge Radcliffe often. And whenever he hears a variance, he says, well, why don't they go in for a text change? That's kind of his standard thing, go in for a text change when, when he, when he renders an opinion denying, you know, a variance.
I think partly because of what Sarah just said, and we were just going to talk about it briefly here. But the, a newer line of cases, not so new anymore, but what do we look at? It was about eight years old now already, this ENF case, which, which made getting variances much more difficult. And, you know, we can, we could, we do spend a whole seminars talking about that. But there are some cases that severely restrict the granting of variances based on hardship. So probably too long to go into now, but but I, I suspect that that is what prompted Judge Radcliffe to say something like that and, and certain other developers to say, I'll go the text change route because you're acting in your legislative capacity and you have, you know, maximum discretion. You got to do it right, and you could be charged with this spot texting, as we call it. But perhaps that allows for more options to applicants and developers.
And since you are preparing to review your entire zoning regulations, you know, one of the things that's helpful is take a look at what the ZBA decisions were in last, I don't know, 10 years, whatever your capacity allows you to look at. And when you see that they frequently grant variances for frequent application, or even if they deny it, but if you see that there is an application that comes in seven times a year, then that regulation should be paid special attention to because there is a reason why so many variances are applied for, for that particular use district, something, right? So as you're looking at your regulations, like, variances are a good way to also look at what should be corrected to allow opportunities.
Yeah, that's an interesting and good point.
I mean, from what I saw this year, Sarah did a good job of bringing the history of the commission to everyone and kind of pointing out regulations that could be altered to, to, I don't know, expedite that.
And just, just wait for when the zoning regulation update subcommittee is ready. I have a whole massive list and an annotated zoning regulation book, so, so get ready.
So I guess I'll ask one more question. Site plan approval. In, in my practice in New York, there's not much of that. Maybe they call it, you know, maybe it's, they might call them certifications, but essentially, it's a perfunctory act that the commission, to me, seems like they're double checking the work of the staff to basically certify compliance with the regulations. There's no obligation that site plan approval in most cases be a part of our zoning, right? If, if, again, and and maybe this is not the typical view of of the evolving of powers, but if we wanted to get rid of our power to do site plan approval and give it to, say, the zoning enforcement officer, there's nothing stopping a commission from saying, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, let a change in zoning from a thrift store to a restaurant not have to come before a commission and can be handled at the, the zoning enforcement level.
Well, Eric, in that example, that's a, that's a use change. And that's a use issue, not a site plan issue. But you can delegate certain duties to the, to Sarah if, if the commission wants to do that. Then her, if she makes a decision on, on one of those things and somebody disagrees, they would appeal to the ZBA. If you, the commission, makes a decision on a site plan and somebody disagrees, that appeal goes to court.
And by your regulations, you can also split what commission is willing to delegate to staff. So not all site plans must be either delegated or belong to the commission. You can create levels of, you know, if it's less than so many parking spaces, if it's less than, you know, whatever, you can create your standards that would allow you to delegate certain ones to the staff and still have oversight over what's more impactful.
My own experience has been that delegating, you know, fairly routine decisions to staff has worked well. I know it's happened on P and Z as well as ZBA. The way back in the day when Evan was putting generators and they, many of them came to ZBA looking for a variance, and it was just driving us crazy. And they were fairly straightforward decisions, and I think we delegated a lot of that to the zoning enforcement officer.
I don't think you did that, John.
Oh, we did, but that, that's another regulation on the list. That's got to go.
Wouldn't be, that's not legal.
It's, it's in the regs, but.
Yeah, well, that's not legal. If it doesn't meet the regs, the staff can't waive it.
We have it flagged.
You mean like a setback violation, you mean?
Yep.
I can't remember the details of it, but there are many of them. We got, it got approved and lawyers and.
It's on the list. Go away.
Good. Lawyers, you said that awful negatively, John. I don't know. That sounded like lawyers, geez.
No names, no names, thankfully.
All right, guys, do we have more questions? We have about 15 minutes until I'd like to wrap up, but if we're done beforehand, I don't think anyone will be disappointed. But I definitely want everyone to have full opportunity to ask their questions if they have them.
So while you're thinking, a 30-second commercial, I know Sarah has already given you notice of the Connecticut Bar Association P and C section seminar on March 22nd. It's on a Saturday. It's all remote, so you can stay at home and watch it. It's a pretty much an all-day affair. We give it every two years. I'll be speaking again. It's cheap and it's, it fulfills some of your requirements. And most people think it's, it's a very, very helpful all-day session, just like we had tonight, but it goes all day. So I hope you'll, you'll think about it. If you've never gone, it's really a very good review, very good, very good learning experience. And if you've gone before, you know, you'll probably pick up some new things or it'll be a refresher. So please come.
And on a first-come, first-served basis, the town can cover your registration fee. So if if all 12 of you sign up, we may not be able to cover it all, but.
And Sarah, you've, you've told the commission what their educational requirements are, I assume, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we've gone over it, probably not in a few months, but.
It's pretty cheap. It used to be 45. It's probably gone up to, what, what is it now, Sarah? I don't know.
160.
Yeah.
Ira, do you still get the, I mean, I went in person back when we did that. Do you still get the big book?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they mailed.
There was a book two years ago. I guess they mailed it to you or something. Yeah.
Yeah, you have to, you have to register before, like, end of February.
Yeah, because I have, right, I have the book that you can keep, and it's, it's a very good resource.
Yeah, it's a great resource.
A lot, a lot of things.
I've been to two of those all-day sessions over the years, and if you've never been to at least one, you probably should. It's, it's, it's time we'll spend.
Yeah, they were at Wesleyan for many years. We still call it the Wesleyan Seminar, but it's not at Wesleyan. It's, it's, it's remote. That started during COVID. Gets a lot more people. We had, I think, between 900 and 1,000 people two years ago.
All right, guys, last call for questions.
All right, I'll ask, I'll ask one more since I'm here. Can we, in this overhaul, can we, on special permits, include terms and requirements for renewal after a certain term? Can we term limit a special permit, say, for a use permit? To 10 years to five years.
Special permits get recorded, but yes, you can have time limits on special permits.
I, and Sarah can correct me. I don't, I don't believe any of our special permits now have term limits on them.
None that I can think of now.
Whether they're conditioned or not, I'm, I'm not sure, but I know.
The term, the term can't be conditioned on who the owner is.
No, I'm on a specific use, right?
There are also, remember, limitations on, on, under the statute on, because generally a site plan accompanies a special permit, and there are statutory time periods where the work has to be completed. Or if it's not complete, yeah, yeah, so.
All right, Renata, do you want us to do your final survey so we can wrap up?
Yes, please. And I also want to just thank you so much for having me and allowing me to stay because I learned from your town attorneys as well, which will inform my training for other commissioners in other towns. So I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you all. Thank you, Renata. Nice to see you and all of you, and we'll see you around soon.
Right. Renata, great job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I'm locking you out of this survey or not.
No, it worked. I could send mine.
Okay, perfect.
Everybody had.
Everybody learned something.
And then I'll move. I have one more. I don't know why this thing is like even showing me all this stuff, but thank you so much and have a very wonderful night.
Thanks, Renata. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.